Maybe it just went black. There we go. All right, ladies and gentlemen, let's go and call the regular city council meeting for May 9th to order. Let the record reflect a starting time of 7:28. And with that said, Clerk Swob, would you please take the role?
Councilmember Brown. Uh, Councilmember Daniels. Councilmember Garza. Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Spadafor. Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Once again, Councilmember Brown. Uh, he's, he was here earlier, but he's not here at the moment, so we have seven, seven members present in quorum. And we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
All right, do we have anybody that needs to be remembered tonight during tonight's moment of meditation? All right, seeing none, if you please, rise. Moment of meditation will be followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, you have for your approval the printed council proceedings of April 11th only. All right, Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President. Hussein, I would move the minutes of April 11th as stands.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Is there further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
All right, um, we are going to pull a couple things out of order with consultation with the President and Vice President. The appointment of Isaac Francisco and is Teresa Stokes here? Oh, that is her, okay. Uh, the appointments of Isaac and Teresa, um, to their boards.
All right, so what we'll, yup, so what we'll do is we will start with, um, the appointment for a third ward representative to the Lansing, Lansing Park Ward. Uh, we have Isaac Francisco, Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. What we have is, is he here? Come down to the... So, Mr. Francisco was before, uh, city operations, um, moved the resolution to make him a member of the Lansing Parks Board. Um, he, uh, lives in the third ward. Um, he's been very active, um, in his neighborhood and his neighborhood parks. Really talked about, um, you know, his, his, um, you know, love to see more opportunities for access to parks and expand events. He talked about, um, wanting to make sure to keep the residents informed. Um, he lives on Seaway Drive. I don't think I was supposed to say that, I'm sorry. But, um, is very active in the parks, in the cleanup of the parks around there. And so with that, I'll move the resolution.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Is there further discussion? All right, as the, um, third ward representative, I do want to say, um, Isaac, how much I appreciate you. Uh, you have been just, you know, I think you moved from first ward, correct? Um, but you have been a staunch advocate, I think, for, uh, you know, a part of town that has not always been prioritized. I think the other piece of it, um, is that when you look at our park system, um, in southwest Lansing, um, I, you know, it is, it's my belief, there's a reason I served five years on the Lansing Park Board from 2010 to 2015, that our parks have not always been prioritized. Uh, again, in, in park service, park services, recreational services, et cetera, are just critical. Um, and so I know, um, you are going to be a fierce advocate, uh, for all parks, uh, but particularly as a ward representative for those parks in southwest Lansing. And I want to thank you and your wife for all you did.
Yes.
Jeanette, as, as well, obviously, for our little neighborhood. Really appreciate you too. All right, with that being said, there's a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, uh, that brings us to the appointment for Teresa Stokes as a business owner, member of the South Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, Boulevard Corridor Improvement Authority for a term to expire July 31st, 2022. Councilman Garza.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, Teresa. So, we had her, we had her in front of the Development and Planning Committee meeting, which, uh, we sent it out to here for approval. Uh, very happy that she chose Martin Luther King Corridor as, uh, her first, uh, choice. Oh, I'm sorry. Um, she's a current restaurant owner of Wing Heaven in South Lansing. If you guys haven't ever been there, great place, best place for wings. Sounds like she's, uh, getting ready to open up another place, uh, in, uh, in downtown, real town. So hopefully, we can get some DLI, uh, help from you there as well. But, uh, I appreciate you being, being here, your willingness to serve and everything that you've done with the community. Um, I'm sure Adam has quite a stu-, quite a, quite an extensive list to state, say to you as well. But, uh, appreciate you, you being here and your willingness to serve. And with that, I'd move the resolution.
All right, there is a motion on the floor, further discussion. Uh, Councilwoman Spitzley.
Just briefly, I love your food. Um, and the folks there are always nice and professional. Um, and I'm so glad that you're on that corridor there, um, and welcome. Thanks.
Oh, do we have another one? Okay, Councilman Brown.
Hello, good to see you again. I agree with Councilwoman Spitzley, but I'm just, you know, encouraged every time that we do attend the community work that's being done. The hope that is being inspired in people, the place for people to fellowship and regain, you know, their independence and their faith that they can be, uh, something great in a place where they have vision and plans for their dreams to come true. So, thank you for that.
All right, Councilman Garza.
All right, one last thing, uh, and I really appreciate what you've been doing in South Lansing. You painted your facility, way to step up. You're not even on the, uh, the board yet, the authority, and you're already making differences in, in South MLK. So, I appreciate you. Thank you, looks nice.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll be brief, I promise. Teresa knows how I feel about her, um, and about, you know, her mission over there. And that really is what it is, it's a mission. Uh, and so I, I always appreciate going in there and, um, you know, and, and having the opportunity to sit down and, and maybe listen to the recovery, uh, group that might be, uh, in there or, uh, maybe, you know, take a constituent of mine who is in recovery themselves, um, but still wants that kind of atmosphere. Um, and so, you know, obviously, we at times call it a sober bar. Um, it's, it's tremendous what you guys are doing over there. You are not simply serving food. Uh, and so we appreciate you and we certainly appreciate, um, your desire to see all of, uh, what I believe is one of the most critical corridors in the entire city, um, to see all of that corridor move forward, um, to better serve the folks in this, in this community. So, thank you so much. Um, that being said, there's a motion on the floor. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, so that brings us to a, um, I'm sorry, our last special ceremony presentation for the night. Uh, we have, uh, the Lansing Housing Commission Housing Update. We do have the Executive Director, uh, Mr. Doug Fleming on hand. So Doug, if you want to come on down, what we're gonna have you do is actually join us down in the well. Uh, so you'll just sit at the table to your right and to our left. And we're gonna ask that you pull that mic close, that you make sure that light is green. Just go ahead and push that button. Yup, the, the microphone too. Yup, we gotta actually turn that on. All right, why don't you go ahead and give it a test real quick?
Are we good now?
Fantastic, yeah. Um, so just to preface the conversation a little bit, um, you know, really twofold tonight. Uh, number one, the Lansing Housing Commission has, um, over the past couple of years, um, uh, invested heavily, uh, into what we call AMPs, or, um, asset management, uh, properties. Uh, and so I do believe, based on the presentation that we received, um, I do believe there's gonna be some discussion regarding that. The other piece, uh, is that in the spring of 2020, we had, uh, maneuvered on our end, uh, so that the Lansing Housing Commission could own property in their own name. And there were a couple of reasons we did that. Number one, um, so that they could access, um, uh, lines of capital, uh, if you will. Uh, and then the other piece, uh, was so that, um, they could, and I mean, there was discussion, uh, so that they could offload, uh, some of their scattered site housing, uh, as, um, it, they were, they were kind of discussing at the time, I was difficult to invest, uh, you know, the oversight was difficult, et cetera. That being said, we had a number of conversations during that time, um, about folks being able to stay in place. Uh, we had a number of conversations, um, about fear, um, that existed regarding, um, slum lords and, and out of, uh, town, um, you know, individuals coming in and, and, you know, kind of profiting off that. Um, and then we also had a conversation about, um, the, you know, the qualification of, uh, the folks, the tenants, uh, that were there and the ability for them to qualify to actually, uh, purchase those homes. That being said, there was, um, probably about a month ago, I think it was mid-April, uh, there were a few reports, uh, that, um, the Lansing Housing Commission was positioning itself to sell, um, north of, maybe all, 200 scattered site houses, 200 plus, I should say, scattered site houses. Um, and so at that point, we fielded a number of questions, uh, and concerns. Uh, Vice President Wood and myself, sorry, we discussed during leadership, uh, potentially bringing in, uh, Mr. Fleming, Fleming, sorry, to address this, uh, matter. Uh, and then I reached out to Mr. Fleming and asked if he would be, uh, willing, uh, to come in. Uh, so we appreciate you being here. Um, we are going to turn the floor over to you. My understanding is you do have a presentation.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and so City TV has that. It looks like you actually have the remote, so you'll be controlling that. Uh, if we struggle with that, we'll, uh, we'll just let...
Oh, yeah, I'm not gonna control it, they're gonna have to do that, so...
Okay, so are you just gonna say next?
Yeah, I will.
Okay, just say next. Um, and then what we'll do, uh, after the presentation is we will open it up, uh, for questions from this body. Okay? All right, Doug, you have the floor.
All right, thank you, uh, Council President Hussein. Um, for those of you who do not know, uh, my name is Doug Fleming. I am three and a half years into a six-month contract. It's an inside joke. I was only gonna be here six months. All right, in front of you, I have a presentation I gave to you today. Um, there's an agenda, we just want to go through what our strategic plan is and I, and as, uh, President Hussein talked about, a lot of the recent conversation is about scattered sites. However, the scattered sites are only one part of an overall strategic plan that we've been implementing, um, for the last three and a half years. And I want to go through that so everybody understands where we've been, um, where we're at and where we're going. So, you can see in the first part, uh, just a little bit of update about what we're doing. The second part, um, is really on page three, we start talking about what our mission statement is. Our board recently did that. Our board has been in strategic planning, um, for the last six months as well, about where we want to go as an agency. Um, and basically, there are three kind of branches of the Lansing Housing Commission, um, that, uh, operate together, but also have very different purposes in terms of what they're trying to accomplish as it relates to housing and support of our residents in the community. The first one is the development, management, and ownership, uh, of properties here in the city of Lansing. Then we have our voucher and our grant programs where we are not the landlord, but we issue, uh, vouchers for folks to find housing with other landlords in the area. And the last then is our resident services. Uh, on the next page, we get to, uh, a little bit of how we break down what we're trying to do, our culture, communication operations. The big thing I would say there is that we've implemented communication tools, including a quarterly newsletter over the last two years, where we've been communicating regularly with our residents. We also send that to, uh, you folks as well. Um, operationally, what we really have moved to is leveraging metrics and reporting to improve performance. Uh, some of you may remember when I took over the Housing Authority, we were a troubled agency, we had 27 outstanding, uh, issues with HUD. We owed our own properties, uh, in excess of a hundred and, uh, $400,000, I guess it was, total $100,000, uh, in AMP, uh, and a variety of other concerns that HUD had previously. Uh, we have cleaned all of those up. We are now a standard agency and a lot of it goes to the fact that we have used these metrics, uh, to kind of move forward. Um, strategy-wise, we're defining the current and future needs of, of the city and primarily related to, uh, housing in the city. And we'll talk a little bit more about that, uh, later in the presentation. Uh, number five, uh, in terms of development, management, and ownership, what we've really done is related to that initiative, is that we've taken advantage of the HUD Rental Assistance, uh, Rental Assistance Demonstration Program, and then we've combined that with the Mishta Lytec program to make, uh, an investment in the city. And we'll talk a little bit about that in a couple of minutes. Uh, and basically what HUD has asked, uh, all of public housing to do in this country is to convert from what is the traditional public housing model, which has a kind of funky funding mechanism, to a much more stable Section 8, uh, funding mechanism. Um, Section 8 is more based off of, the income is based off of, uh, the amount of tenant rents you get. And then, um, you also have a, uh, a capital fund that is, uh, initially set up based on a capital needs assessment and then funded, uh, every month, so that you not only have a stable income, but you also have a long-term capital fund in which you can make sure that whatever you do with the assets, you have the funds in the future to invest back in those programs. Um, we also plan to leverage the HUD Section 18 program. The sale of scattered houses is also a HUD program, um, also, uh, which allows you to transition those units from public housing into a Section 8 format as well. And we'll talk about that. The other thing that we did, we existed some, uh, uh, we identified some existing poor performing or troubled assets, uh, to purchase and rehab. Um, that is what we're, our next phase is here in the city. Um, and we're in the discussion, uh, right now with, uh, both the purchase of an existing building that used to house, uh, apartments in the building that has been closed down by the city, uh, that we may purchase and, and rehab. Uh, and then also taking a vacant lot and turning it into a multi-use, where we will have some retail, commercial, uh, affordable housing combined with some market rate housing. It'll probably be the first development of that in the city. So, these are the kind of things that we're looking to do at as we move forward. Some of it's gonna be community-specific and we'll talk a little bit about that later on as well. The venture, the voucher and, uh, grant programs, um, we want to continue to maintain and increase our vouchers that we administer, um, through, uh, Section 8 as a part of HUD. Um, also expand new voucher programs and grants. We'll talk a little bit about some new ones that we have acquired in the last couple of years, uh, and taken over management of those. And then within the resident services, um, we just want to develop strong partnerships. We work with a lot of local organizations already, uh, in terms of GED, literacy, education, uh, and some of those things. And I'll reference those a little bit later as well. One of the other things I do want to talk about in terms of the develop of new projects, I talked about two new potential projects that we're working on. In addition to the potential projects, um, Lansing Housing Commission has been the key to, um, three other developments that are already either underway or soon to be underway in terms of construction in the city. Um, we're a partner in the Stadium North, uh, Stadium Senior, which is 132 units of housing that will be built, um, just north of the stadium. Um, and then also 73 units of Waldorf French, where we're in partnership with the Capital Area Housing Partnership by providing them with 12 project-based vouchers, which made that deal, uh, eligible and score well enough so that they could get the tax credits to renovate that, uh, former school. And then we also, uh, provided project-based vouchers to a, uh, project, uh, over in East Lansing called Woodward Way, where there are 49 new units of affordable housing that construction has begun on those particular units. So, those three projects alone with LHC's involvement, uh, is gonna create about 254, uh, brand-new, uh, units of affordable housing, uh, in the greater Lansing area. Uh, on the next, uh, slide, we talk about RUD is, uh, RUD, RAD is an actual HUD initiative. Uh, and it's designed to transition the units from public housing to Section 8, as I said. Um, the benefits of the program on the right-hand side is it stabilized HUD funding. It's one of the things I talked about. Right now, public housing is a budgetary process, so each public housing submits our budget to HUD. HUD submits that to the United States Congress. Congress decides how, how much money you're gonna get. Um, we may ask for a million dollars, as an example. HUD can come back to us and say, "Look, Doug, you get $900,000, figure it out." Uh, and that happens every year. And they do the same thing on the capital side, which means then that each year that we don't get those funds, we're underfunded in either the operations area or we're underfunded in the capital area. Um, the biggest deficit has really happened in the capital area. Um, there are estimates that public housing has been underfunded in this country to levels of an excess of $32 billion. Um, so this is a way through RAD that we can move public housing to Section 8 and solve some of that backdated, um, much-needed investment into, uh, public housing. It provides some long-term stability to the program as well. We basically renewed this public housing that was built 30, 40, and even 50 years ago. And by renovating it, we give it a shelf life of maybe another 30 years or so, um, with brand-new, updated, um, uh, facilities. Um, the other thing that happens when you go to Section 8 is that we have access to a source of funds for improvement. Bizarrely enough, under, uh, public housing, public housing entities are not allowed to borrow money. Um, so if we have a roof out there currently in the public housing model and I really don't have the funds to put a roof on it and I want to go to a local bank and borrow money, um, we are not allowed, um, under the, uh, federal statute to, to be able to do that. Um, so it's just, by moving to Section 8, you open up that, that box of availability of capital that allows us to do a lot of things that we can't do. Um, to date, there's about 140,000 units, uh, nationwide that have been converted through HUD at the end of 2021. So, we're just a part of a greater effort in the nation, uh, to move through this process. We're not unique, we're kind of a little bit ahead of the game and, um, um, but we feel that it was a, a, a great program that HUD designed and we took advantage of it. If you go to the next slide, it really talks about the four projects that we did do, that we did move through RAD. Um, this is Waverly Place, formerly known as Mount Vernon, um, Capital City Apartments, which was, uh, used to be South Washington, Hildebrandt Park, and we just recently closed Leroy Flo, Leroy Frowe in March of this year, so just a couple of months ago. You can see from a construction standpoint, we have it all listed, um, that range from about $13.6 million worth of investment. This is pure dollars into the construction part of the renovations at the property, uh, down to, um, 11 million at Hildebrandt, uh, for a total of around $50.6 million of investment is gonna ultimately go into, um, these four sites in the city of Lansing. In addition to that, um, again, one of the great benefits of the RAD process is that you, it is mandatory that you set up, um, those reserves that we're talking about. So, in the case of Waverly Place, um, we have about $1.8 million of capital reserves and operating reserves that are set aside. So, if the property does run into any kind of financial problems in the future, we have kind of a big savings account sitting out there that's gonna allow us to, to do that. These numbers are based off of, of a 20-year capital needs assessment. So fundamentally, anything that the assessment says could go wrong in the next 20 years has to be prefunded, uh, as a part of the Lytec deal. And we set that money aside before we even, uh, before we, we finish the construction. It's actually done at close, before you even begin construction. Um, and then we also are then obligated each month to continue to fund that reserve balance as well. So each property, based on a formula, is setting aside an additional funds, um, every month towards future capital needs. So, not only have we renewed the buildings for the next 20 to 30 years, but we've also invested in the maintenance of those buildings for the next 20 to 30 years as well. So then you see the total investment comes to around 56.4 million. If you look at the expected completion dates, Waverly Place, which has been under construction for about 15 months now, uh, is due to be done here in July. We're actually working on our very last buildings over there. Um, we were transitioning, we were doing construction, uh, by building by building. We do a couple of buildings, move people into the renovated units, go to the new, the empty buildings now, renovate there, and then move across the property. That's been the kind of pathway that we've taken with each one of the properties. Um, and we expect to have a grand reopening at Waverly, um, sometime late summer, maybe early fall out there, that, uh, we'll be sure to invite all of you two. Capital City Apartments, uh, was the second one that went through. It is expected to be completed in September of 2022. Hildebrandt in January of 2023. And finally, uh, about a year from now, um, we will finalize our last, uh, uh, construction in June of 2023 with Leroy Frowe. The next page just shows a little bit of some of the, the pictures. The money has gone both to the outside and to the inside, as we tell the residents. Um, look around your apartment, this is pre-construction. Um, see the drywall, that's about all, that's not gonna get touched. And even that's gonna get moved around a little bit, patched, painted, uh, some of that, but it's not gonna get taken out. Other than that, everything is new. Doors, windows, floors, appliances, um, everything in the unit, um, is brand-new compared to where it was. The other thing that we really like about the process, and this is mandated through, uh, the Mishta Lytec program, is that we've also upgraded to green standards, which is mandatory in a Lytec deal, and ADA compliant. So, we're meeting the American with Disabilities Act as well. Uh, we have added central air conditioning in all of our units now, which was not there before. Dishwashers in some units and in some of our four-bedroom units where we've had one and a half baths. Um, we also factored in to take those to two bathroom units, which is gonna be of great convenience to our larger families, um, that are residents in our building. The updated, uh, building exteriors all have 30-plus-year warranties on them, including the roofs, sidings, and that kind of stuff. So, not only, even though we only have a 20-year CNA, we have products in there that have 30-year warranties. So, we really look to make sure that we would maintain these buildings, uh, or build them in a way that they could be maintained for the next 20-plus, plus years. The next program that we're gonna talk about is the Section 18 program. The Section 18 is just a different way that you can convert housing from public housing into Section 8. There are certain units under the RAD law, um, and the guidance that it is, that some units don't qualify for RAD. So, if the question comes out, "Why didn't you take the, the scattered houses through RAD?", they're not eligible under the program. So, they have to go through a different program. That program's called Section 18, and that's the process that we're in the middle of, uh, right now. Section 18, um, you can see there's a bunch of details involved, but I think one of the key things, and this was also true, the RAD process is that includes very robust resident, uh, relocation rights and potential home ownership, home ownership opportunities. And we are working with both parts of that particular, uh, details of the program. Uh, it also outlines very strictly the rules and regulations for the future use of the funds. So, these are not just funds as we sell the houses, these are not just unrestricted funds, they're actually restricted by HUD and they have to be reinvested, uh, in affordable housing in the city, um, in our jurisdiction, um, uh, here in Lansing. So, um, it's not just, you know, we can't just take the funds and, and go out and have a really nice picnic. Uh, we're not allowed to do that. As we spend those funds in the future, we have to go back to HUD and say, "This is what we're using the funds for." HUD will then release the funds and say, "Yes, that's an eligible expense based on, uh, the rules of the Section 18 program." Um, the potential benefits, uh, the biggest thing is significant capital influx to further support affordable housing in the area. Um, we continue to need more affordable housing, uh, in the area, we need better affordable housing in the area. And so the sale of the scattered homes is gonna provide, um, some capital for Lansing Housing Commission to do just that. Continue to invest and build in more affordable housing than what we've, uh, already invested in, as I talked about, the other 200 units that we're already a part of. Um, also, this is an alignment of a HUD direction to move out of public housing platform. So, this is not something that the Lansing Housing Commission Board of Directors came up with. Um, it's a, it's a HUD program that we are following, uh, and we have an application into HUD, uh, and working both with the, and there are city requirements in there as well. We've been working with the city, uh, as we've moved through, uh, the Section 18 process as well. If you go to slide, uh, 10, um, the Section 18 scattered sites, uh, is expected to include roughly 202 houses. It's a little bit of a floating number because we're working with some residents on the purchase of their homes. Uh, and if they can get that transition done, then they will buy their house, that then becomes out of the actual transaction. Um, we might sell less, we might sell a few more, depending on how that all works out. But we're working with those residents right now, uh, to get that all finalized. But you can see right now, um, the scattered houses really are scattered houses. They're located throughout the entire city. You can see in a geographical region, we have houses, uh, all over the, the city of Lansing. The Section 18 timeline, um, there's been some commentary about that, that people think that this just happened. Um, we have been talking about this for the better part of two years, both at our meetings. I also made a presentation to this body, uh, a couple of years ago, well, about our intent, and President Hussein alluded to that. Uh, you can see kind of the timeline of what we went through. Um, the, the most significant things have happened most recently, so I understand the, uh, the talk. Um, we distributed and posted the RFP, uh, in October of last year. Um, and then in November, we went through a series of questions with those that had submitted, uh, responses. Uh, we conducted, there's some site visits, um, both in, I did some due diligence with the buyers, but as, as well as, um, they came up here and did some site visits of the properties here as well. Um, and we also received all the RFP responses. Now, we're into the blue dots. You can see this spring of this year, we're reviewing the possible, uh, we're reviewing the final, doing some of the final reviews. We have a short list that we've already talked about, um, identifying, work with the, the residents on buying their home, um, and also then providing the information about what will happen, um, post-sale. Um, and then the fall this year is the expected close time. Um, we don't have an exact timeframe at this point, we don't even have an LOI yet. We're still in negotiations with the, with the one, uh, buyer that we've kind of centered on in terms of the, the final purchase. of the final purchase. So if you look at the next page on 12, there were some questions about the RFP. We used a broker per HUD's guidance, we hired a broker. We also work with our development partner, the same development partner, Chesapeake Community Advisors that we used in all the RAD deals. They signed on for all of our transformation from public housing into Section 18. We sent it out to over 375 groups. It was also posted on the LHC website in October of 2022, and remained open on our website from October of 2022 through December of 2022, or approximately eight weeks. We had 25 interested parties, that meant that they went in and actually signed the letter of confidentiality that we required for them to get the rest of the information. And then out of that, we received two formal bids. From there, then we broke it down to one leading candidate, which I think some people already know, is SK Investments. And you can see on the right-hand side, some of the information about SK Investments. Say the biggest thing in terms of the notable projects is that they have completed a very similar transaction with the Pontiac Housing Authority. I have spent some time with the Pontiac Executive Director, talked to him about what has happened post-sale, and everything that he talked about, and everything that they talked about us thus far in terms of what they would do. They have upheld that in their relationship with the Pontiac Housing Authority. So that was part of our vetting and our due diligence with this group. If you go to the next page, we talk about completing a HUD-approved Section 8 transaction would include many benefits for the residents, LHC, and the broader community. First of all, we have negotiated with the buyer that we will, we, meaning the Lansing Housing Commission, will provide project-based vouchers for all the houses, so they will remain affordable for the next 20 years. We'll sign a 20-year half contract with them, it's one of the requirements of the agreement. And that 20-year half contract has the option of a 20-year renewal. I won't be here in 20 years, but someone will have the option to negotiate that renewal at that time to keep them affordable for, potentially keep them affordable for another 20 years after that. Funds earned for future affordable housing, I think this is really key. The money that we are going to bring in from the Lansing Housing Commission as part of our strategic plan is that we have talked specifically about what we're calling community-specific housing. We have a lot of housing needs in the city, but a lot of them are very specific. The needs that we have with our Vet-Vash voucher individuals is very different from the ones that we might get from Haven House, which are more family-based. We have a shortage, as you've recently seen with Section 8, information both in the newspaper and on TV, that we have a real need for three- and four- and five-bedroom affordable housing units in the city. So what our intent is, is to take these funds, work with the city, work with other housing officials in the city, other folks that are involved in housing, to build community-specific housing, whatever that happens to be. It may be a duplex, it may be four single-family homes, it may be, you know, a half a dozen three-, four-, or five-bedroom units on a lot, or whatever that happens to be. We don't know what all of those are going to be, but what we do know is that, one, the funds must be invested in affordable housing in the city, and, two, my board wants to make sure that we're community-specific, that we don't just come in here and build the cookie-cutter kind of affordable housing that you see, where a developer comes in, builds a 50-unit, one- and two-bedroom building, and then moves to the next city because the low-income tax credit program kind of promotes that. Because we're local, because we're here, and because we work on the voucher side, we know what these community needs are. We work with the groups that have the needs, and we can sit down with them and talk about how we can do that. We firmly believe that we can then, by taking the proceeds from the sale, that we can one, two, three, maybe even four X those funds before we're done. We've already shown our ability in the RAD deals to leverage the amount of money that we got, two and three times, by using the tax credit program. There's a variety of other programs that are out there, both through HUD and through other housing entities, that we expect to use when we're putting together these future community-specific deals. So the proceeds will not just be a one-to-one, we're going to invest that amount of money back in the city. We really expect that that will be two, three, four times the amount that we get from the sale of the houses, we can turn back into more affordable housing in the city. And it's also our intent that by the time we're done, even though we're only selling 220 affordable housing units, that we might be able to two or three X the number of affordable housing units in the city. And it's not always going to be new stuff. Part of it will be buying a building, as we talked about earlier, that either is currently affordable housing and not very well-managed, taking it over, renovating it, and then bringing it up to a much better standard than it is today. So it's not all about new units either, it can be a little bit of both. We're also working with residents in the homeownership program. Right now, we have 40 existing residents in this latest round that declared their interest in buying their home, they're in the process of financially qualifying for that. We did have eight in the first round, we made an offer late last year to our residents. We did have, again, about 40 in that process. It did get weeded down to just eight that have currently qualified, and we're working right now with Habitat for Humanity. I was out at Pleasant on, I think it's Pleasant Road, or, no, Pheasant, sorry. Is it Road or Avenue? I'm not sure, Edmonds down in your area, down on the south side down there. Anyways, we are with Habitat right now, we're renovating a two-bedroom house down there. We already have a homeowner ready for the house to move in once we finalize construction, and so we will be selling that house to a low-income resident, which means that they have to be 80% or below AMI to qualify for the program. We're also in discussion with Capillary Housing Partnership, also met with Dr. Parker over at the East Side Community Center, who also has kind of a homeownership program. Those are also other entities in the city that we're going to be able to work with to help everybody realize what our ultimate housing goals are here in the city. So it's a great opportunity for the Housing Commission to be very specific in what we do and the kind of investments that we make, and we plan on working directly with other housing groups in the city to move the city forward. Oversight and control, we have been asked by the purchaser to manage the scattered houses. We are still looking at that business model, whether we want to do it, they ultimately have to ask us, we don't even have an LOI with them again. So there is even the possibility that we will continue to manage the units, even though they will have a new owner that comes along with them. If you go to the next page, you can see that, you know, the expected funds from the sale, I just referenced this, some of our partners that we already work with, and then the use of the funds. Not only do the funds be used for direct investment into housing, but there's also the possibility that we could use some of the funds in investment in some additional resident services, in terms of the support of some of those things that we talked about earlier. Some of the big questions that we get, and I will add on this page, that one of the things that we're going to do, and we're in the middle of putting together, thanks to the mayor, had an idea, him and I talked a couple days ago, a Q&amp;A on our website of the most frequently asked questions relative to the sale of the houses, that our residents can go to and look them up, and then get their answers to those questions. And here's just the start of some of those, because here are some of the top questions that we've got. One, will I have to move? No, no one has to move if they don't want to move. Residents in good standing and qualifying will not have to move, these are mainly the same requirements public housing today. So some people have taken the words qualifying and good standing to mean something other than they mean. What they mean is that in all housing programs, you have to qualify every year. We do an annual recertification that proves that you're still eligible for subsidized housing. This is a HUD requirement. HUD actually audits our files every year, you know, a certain percentage of our files, not all of them, to make sure that we're doing that, and we're doing it accurately. Also during that process, we also determine the rent for the next year, as our residents' rents are always based off of 30% of their income. So we have to figure out what income they have for the year, we do a calculation, we tell them this is what your rent's going to be for the next year. That's called the annual certification. So when we talk about qualifying, that's what we're talking about, you have to qualify for the program. The second part is in terms about being in good standing, that just means that you're paying your bills, that you're up to date in your rent, and that you don't have a bunch of lease violations. Now, having said that, if we find somebody as we get to the end of the sale that does have some issues relative to being behind in funding, we are going to look at each one of those on an individual basis to see exactly why they're behind in funding, and is there a possibility that we can work with that resident to get them caught up and get them back in good standing before we make the sale, so that they will qualify to continue to live in their house as well. So it's not just a, hey, if you haven't paid your bill, you're going out. We can work with Capillary Housing Partnership, who runs the SARA program, other organizations, the city has some programs we can work with as well. It is not financially advantageous for us or for anybody to evict residents. It's a very, very expensive process, eviction is, and no one in our industry that knows what they're doing wants to evict residents. It makes no sense, it doesn't make financial sense to do that. We're better off keeping them in there in any way that we can keep them in there, you know, as long as they're not doing damage or threatening other residents, we want to keep them in our units. Can I move with the voucher? This is a little caveat that comes with the Section 18 program that you don't get if it remains in public housing. And that is after 12 months after the final sale, any resident that's currently living in one of our project-based units will be eligible, what's called a tenant protection voucher. Tenant protection voucher is a fancy name for a Section 8 voucher, which means that that tenant then can take that tenant protection voucher, and they can move anywhere they want to, within the city, within the state, or within the country. It's a mobile voucher, and they'll have that ability to do that if they want to. It's a free choice by the individual that's living there, if they're happy with the situation where they're at, they can stay in the project-based voucher. Remember, project-based, just for a quick definition, means that the voucher stays with the unit, or with the house, with the address. You move in, you get the subsidy, you move out, the subsidy stays with the house. A tenant protection voucher, or a Section 8 voucher, is an individual voucher, that means it goes with you. While you're in the house, the subsidy is with you, you leave the house, the subsidy goes with you, and you can take that subsidy anywhere where anybody else will accept that subsidy. And again, both within the city, state, or anywhere in the country. We port people in all the time within Lansing, from other states, and we port people out, where we allow them to take their voucher somewhere else in the country. It's a pretty standard process amongst public housing authorities. Will my rent change? No, rent will always, will continue because it's our voucher now, it'll be our voucher after the sale, the same rules in terms of what you pay for rent will be the same one. The only way that your rent will change is if your income changed, because again, your rent is based on the percent of your income. Do I have to sign a new lease? Yes, because you have a new landlord, so you're going to have to sign a new lease. Will I have to complete a certification packet? Yes, because you're certifying that you can live in that house, that would be just like your normal annual recertification. So yes, you'll have to fill that out, but you already filled that out today, and that's not going to change. Will I need to put down a new security deposit? We are working on this particular issue. What we don't want to do is have someone have to, you know, pay the new landlord a $200 down deposit while we hold $200 and let the two pass the mail, and tell them they've got to come up with that for 30 days while we refund them. So we are working on that issue, but again, this is an issue after we sign an LOI that we'll have to work through. It is our intent that we'll make sure either that that is seamless, that it happens, that you get your money back before you owe the new money, or that we'll just transfer the money that you currently have with us over to the new owner, so there will be, it'll be seamless for you either way. We'll make sure that there's no way that the other owner's going to ask for the security deposit, and then we're going to give you a check 30 days later, so now you have two security deposits out there. A lot of our residents, that would not work. Will utilities need to be adjusted? No, they don't. Utility services are already assigned at our scattered houses to the residents that live in those houses, so they'll just remain with the same utility sign that they have today. We had a resident meeting Zoom in April, where we, our first of our mandatory meetings, we were that far into the Section 8 process, even though we had been communicating with residents through the last couple of years about our intent to sell the houses. Our first really engagement with the residents was just in April of this year. We had a meeting and a Zoom. From that, we got a bunch of information, we've made some adjustments because of that. Then we sent a direct letter to the residents after that, to remind them of what we had talked about in the meeting. So anybody that was not at the meeting or not on the Zoom, got a direct letter after that, that clearly outlined exactly the process that I've just described to you this evening. We'll have another resident meeting in June of 2022, we'll do that again, and then we'll file that up with another letter, if there's any additional questions or concerns that come out of that meeting at that point. As I said earlier, we're adding a Q&amp;A to the website, and one of the other issues, which is not really related, but it's more of a business practice, is that some of the residents at our scattered sites talked about the difficulty of submitting a maintenance request. So we have also added a maintenance request on our website as well, so residents don't have to fill that out and drop it off like they did previously, or they could have called in, they can now just go to the website and create a maintenance request to get something done at their house. If you go to page 16, this just talks a little bit about our voucher programs and where they're at today. Our core programs, these are the LHC programs that we've had for a long time, we have the Housing Choice Voucher Program, we have 1,600 participants on that program, we have a Shelter Plus Care Program that we run through the COC, and then we have a Permanent Supportive Housing Voucher Program, Grant Program that we work that has another 80. These, when we talk about vouchers, we're really talking about families in most cases here, so you can see there. The growth, this has happened in the last couple of years. We added through Mishta, Mishta had a RFP that they put out, where they were not happy with their current provider of the folks that were doing their housing choice vouchers, and so we submitted, and Mishta awarded us 650 additional vouchers that are now administered by LHC on behalf of Mishta. So they're technically Mishta vouchers, we're the administrator for those vouchers, because Mishta felt that we could do a better job than the folks that they were using previously. Emergency housing vouchers, we also assumed in December, I think some of you know, some Holy Cross programs, as they basically sent a letter out and said, we're out, we're not going to be doing this work anymore. Us, in cooperation with the Capillary Housing Partnership, stepped up to take on those grants. Within that, there's 30 emergency housing vouchers, 50 permanent-supporting housing vouchers, and 20 rapid rehousing for families. Each one of these vouchers, while they are ultimately housing vouchers, and the resident will pay 30% of their income, they have different qualifications. Some of them you have to be in a family, some of them you have to be actual, you have to be actually in a homeless shelter beforehand, you have to come from shelter in order to qualify. So there's some nuances to each one of them, which is why we have a variety of different programs. And then also through Mishta, we have the project-based vouchers, I talked about us utilizing them to create development in the city, that's what this line talks about, we have 120 of those that are currently out there, that are being utilized to spur development in the city. We also have 30 on our own that we're using at our Oliver Gardens project, which is down behind the Capital City Building, which is also, we're looking to submit that for rehabilitation in October of this year. So that will be our final property that we're going to submit to Mishta for a Lytec deal, and we're under that. So in total, we have about 2,500, almost 2,600 vouchers that we're responsible for in the city, as well as the almost 1,000 units that we have, 850-plus units where we, where we're the landlord, and we actually physically house the individuals. So Lansing Housing Commission is responsible daily for over 3,000, 3,500 lives in the city, and my hat's off to my staff, who do a great job every day trying to serve our clients. We make mistakes, no doubt about it, but every day we try to work and get a little bit better at that. So we're not satisfied just being who we were, we're also growing to serve more and more populations within the city. In December, I mentioned that we did take on the Capillary Housing Partnership, we worked together with them. Some of you may know or heard the term the HARA. The HARA is kind of the heartbeat of the housing industry in terms of the low-income folks in the city. It is where all of the funds and grants and support programs kind of flow through the HARA. That was one of the programs that the Holy Cross had, and they also had decided they weren't going to do anymore. So there was approximately 30 employees total that got a notice that they were going to be fired two weeks in front of Christmas, and between Capillary Housing Partnership and the Lansing Housing Commission, we saved all of those jobs, and we seamlessly, almost too seamlessly, because no one seems to know we've done it, continued to serve those populations through the last several months. And we're going to continue to do that. Right now, we did get approached last week by another organization that's also struggling, and they have come to Lansing Housing Commission. My board on Wednesday of last week authorized me to spend up to $25,000 in support of the hotel program, that is having some issues. One of the things that we're doing is, not only we're going to look at maybe providing some cash, that's still up in the air, I just have the authority, we have to get a lot more numbers, but we're also doing some one-on-one housing intervention with the folks that are in the hotel program to get them permanent, more permanent housing. We've already identified through some quick demographics, I think there was 35-plus individuals still remaining in the hotel program, that about 27 or 28 of them would qualify for some type of housing program on the surface. Now, there's a lot of due diligence that needs to go after that part, but the beginning of it is, is that we think that we can immediately remove 26 to 28 of those individuals and get them into a more permanent housing situation other than the hotel program. So we're working with that organization to do that. Again, my board's been very proactive about being supportive of any housing. That is not our bailiwick, by the way, we are not an emergency support shelter organization. There are other organizations in the city that do that. We're just supporting these organizations to help them get to the more permanent setting, which is what, which is really what our core business is. And we don't want to be in that business, we're just literally trying to be supportive during that process. So also, go to the next page. So also, go to the next page. The other thing, again, in the news, we talked a little bit about this, is that we do have a lot of Section 8 vouchers out there. We have been concerned of late. We are limited by the amount that we can pay for rent based on the HUD program. So when I give you a Section 8 voucher, it comes with a rental amount. One bedroom has a level, two, three, four, and five has a level. With the rising rents tied directly to inflation, that I think everybody knows and reads about every day, there are more and more landlords in the city who have decided that it is more advantageous to not accept a Section 8 voucher and to just take market rent. That means there are less units available for our folks that we hand out vouchers to. We are currently processing over 100 vouchers a week and issuing those to individuals in the city. They are then given 90 days to go out into the area, and our area is actually larger in the city, we have some presence in Eaton, Ingham, and Clinton County. They have 90 days. I will tell you that in the last couple of months, we've had, I think, one month we had 15 folks, and I think another month we may have had 17 or 18, that had been out there for those 90 days. We'll also give them a 30- to 60-day extension, depending on what they tell us and how hard they've been looking, who have returned those vouchers to us, and basically said, "I cannot find housing." So, and if you know how hard it is to get one of our vouchers, the waitlist only opens up about once a year. We had 3,300 people apply the last time, we have to lottery that down to 1,000, and then we, you finally win the lottery and get in that group and get a voucher, and to go out for 90 or 120 days and then not be able to find housing, it's just gotta be heartbreaking for those folks to not be able to find stuff. So we are working hard to try to make that, so no one ever turns a voucher back into us. One of the things that we've done, working with our other public housing agencies across the state, also with a little bit of help from HUD, and we also, through the help of Brian McGrane, got connected with the local Lansing Landlord Association. We have come up with an incentive program, and that sheet is in there, where we're going to pay money for new landlords, folks that have returned to the program, that previously were Section 8 folks, and then some other things that we hope, based on their feedback, we'll try to bring more units back into the program. So the combination of us trying to build more affordable housing, that we can put our Section 8 folks in, at the same time trying to incentivize other landlords in the city to do that, we're kind of taking a two-pronged approach. One is a little longer term, you can't build a building overnight, you can't renovate a building overnight, but we can put some incentives in place and try to make that happen, and so we're working to try to do that.
Okay, real quick, Doug.
Yep.
I wanna make sure that we are respectful, number one, of the folks in the audience in terms of their time. I know there's a number of folks that are here to actually provide their own input on this issue. I also wanna make sure that we have time for the folks at this desk to ask questions. So I'm gonna ask you to wrap up in about 10.
Yep, I am done. Actually, the last thing is pillows, where we talk about what our resident services are. They're all listed there, the different programs that we've been working on in the city. We have five pillars that we work on to try to improve the lives of our residents, who are actually in Lansing resident housing, and we also often open it even to the community around our properties if they want to stop by. So that does complete my presentation, Mr. President.
Thank you so much, we appreciate that. Are there questions, comments? I do believe I saw Councilman Garza and Councilman Jackson. Councilman Garza, go ahead.
Thank you, Council President. Boy, you're long-winded. Good to see you.
Thank you. Well, we had a lot of information, we've done a lot of stuff in the last couple of years, so.
Well, I appreciate you being here. Regarding the offloading of the scatter site housing, how did that come about? I understand that you contacted 375 groups, how many were local? I mean, because it sounds like this Sunrise or S and K Investments out of Florida.
Yes, they are. You know, there was several local groups that we talked to, I don't know the exact number, Councilman, but again, the RFP was on our website for two months, we've been talking about this for two years, and they ultimately were the only one that made a viable bid. And we talked to several local groups who want to work with us in the future, once we sell the houses, on some of the housing programs that they're interested in, but they weren't necessarily interested in purchasing the houses that we have right now.
Was there any outreach to, like, the neighboring homes, or the neighbors, to see if they wanted to purchase any of these scatter site houses?
No, because we want the houses to stay affordable, that was one of the goals going in, is that we were gonna keep the houses affordable, and so we needed an entity that was willing to do that. I think most of the neighbors would probably not want to keep it affordable, or they don't have the expertise in which to do that, to manage the properties in a way that they could administer a HUD project-based voucher.
Okay, so when you say affordable, that means it's gonna stay Section 8? I just wanted to make sure.
It, no, it's not Section 8, it's a project-based voucher. It's the exact same voucher that's on the house today.
Okay, and you potentially could still manage these properties, is what I?
Correct. We have been asked by the seller to manage the properties. You know, we haven't made a final decision on that, because we don't even have an LOI with the buyer yet. So that would be terms that we would talk about once we finalize contract terms.
Okay, now, do you plan on hiring more management? Because, I mean, not to be, not to pick on you, but the few houses that are in my ward that constantly have complaints, one after another, is that they're not being managed.
I'm very aware of the houses in your neighborhood, and some of those concerns are legitimate, and some of those are not legitimate. And we do respond anytime a neighbor, or someone in this body, or the mayor's office talks to us about a problem, we immediately respond to that issue, whatever the issue happens to be. The tenants that are living at the house sign a lease that says that they have some obligations that are part of them maintaining that house. And we will enforce the lease, and when we are told that there is a lease issue, we did that. Now, we have hired an additional maintenance guy into the program as well, so we do have a third maintenance guy, we just only have two working on the scattered houses. So that's gonna help a little bit in terms of addressing those concerns.
Okay, no further questions, right now.
Okay. And I certainly appreciate that, Doug, but, you know, when we were having this conversation a few years back, one of the things that we talked about was the capacity of the Lansing Housing Commission to manage these the way they deserve to be managed, to provide the type of oversight that the folks living there deserve. And at that time, you know, it was our understanding that you felt that you all did not have the capacity. So to hear that this group wants you to manage this property, or these properties, I should say, is, I don't know, it's perplexing to me. We have Councilman Jackson, Councilwoman Spitzley, we have Vice President Wood, and then we have Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I started off with only a few things to say, but as, you know, the conversation, especially about the scattered houses, went on, I had more and more questions. So I recall, I had an objection in the past when we were gonna just transfer our name, you know, we owned it, they owned it, transfer our name so they can do some things, but it's really like both of ours, the scattered houses. We had a lot of questions, like, this is an asset, you know, there's people who, there's people who need it, there's, you know, programs locally, there's, you know, from the hotel program that you're gonna look for permanent housing, to a house. You say that potentially we can build in the future, you know, three to four-bedroom, but what is a standalone house to a family who needs three or four bedrooms? Basically, that a basement's gonna be a bedroom, too. So, and then when the objective is also to build more, or to like expand affordable housing, and then you talk about getting rid of it, and then possibly managing it, that's.
Remember, let me just correct you, we're not getting rid of one unit of affordable housing in the city.
Well, in 20 years, it could be, and that's like two families' worth of occupancy.
Yes.
And from there, I guess.
But I should also point out, Councilman, that the HAB contracts that everybody has in the city, not just Lansing Housing Commission, are 20-year contracts. HUD signs 20-year contracts with everybody that owns an affordable housing building in this city, not just Lansing Housing Commission. And that is a 20-year with a 20-year renewal. So everyone's operating under the exact same rule.
So what, you mentioned that you had extensive conversations with this group, what are their vision? I mean, is it the same as yours? Is there, you mentioned that.
Yes.
Everything lined up. Can you just briefly, I know we have time here, but briefly say what their vision is also?
Yeah, they wanna provide good-quality, affordable housing in the city, just like we do. And they have done that, when they go in to do the renovations, they're capitalized. One of the real problems here is not so much about our management of it, but our ability to provide the capital. HUD's formula, when we went through the RAD transaction, primarily the scattered houses were being subsidized on a capital level by the amps. Once the amps went through the process of RAD, we no longer get capital funds, because they're not part of the public housing anymore. So the formula now will really bring us down to where we're gonna be getting about $2,500 a house per year, in terms of capital funds, based on the past HUD formula. That is not adequate for the situation that these houses are in today. This entity has capital funds that they can invest, they'll also have the ability, once we go through Section 18, to borrow money that we can't borrow either, as they sit today as affordable housing, as public housing, I should say, not affordable, so.
And maybe my colleagues can help me, if you shake my head, yes or no. Did we know that they could potentially just sell it to whoever? Did we know that when we gave it away, when we just signed our name over? We knew that they were gonna offload it, all these scattered homes?
Well, we didn't give, we didn't give anything away. I mean, the, when we signed the, when we did the action a few years ago, I mean, the houses were never technically owned by us. They were owned by HUD and somebody else. So we didn't offload anything, we just kind of did a, from what I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, councilmembers, it was kind of almost like a clerical affair. We did not own those houses.
But what he's asking is, you know, subsequent to that.
Well, I, but I just wanted to make sure.
No, I get, I get what you're saying. But by maneuvering on our end, that this could potentially happen, and I heard somebody say, and I think happened so, that yes and no. We, did we know that this was the potential? Yes, or there was potential for this, but did we also express a number of concerns at that time? And, you know, there were certain promises made, and things of that nature. Some folks, I think, you know, would argue that those promises have been kept, I think others are concerned that they haven't been kept. But, you know, we made our decisions based on the information that we had at the time. But go ahead.
I guess just my last area, possibly. So I recall from those conversations, we're like, yeah, you know, we have like Mikey23, a local group, you know, that we could do things with these houses, and, yeah, I said that, at the time, if I recall, we were deliberating, saying we had local groups, like Mikey23, I think you were open to, I think you said, I don't know, we have the minutes and the record, but that was a part of it. So it sounds like none of that's been contemplated, it's just.
Well, I would, I would correct you, Councilman, that I just indicated that we're working with several local groups, and we're going to be open to working with any local groups. In addition, we're not preventing Mikey23 or any other local organization from buying any house in the city. These houses, under HUD Section 18, have to be sold at market rate. So they can go into the market today and buy any house that they want. The fact that we're selling 200 houses to one buyer doesn't change the marketplace in terms of what other people can go out and buy. If local groups want to go out and buy homes today, they can do that, we're not preventing them from doing that. If they were going to buy it from us, they were gonna pay market rate anyways, because that's what, that's what HUD requires, and that's what the bid was.
Okay, and then I guess just, you know, you referred to Lansing Housing Commission as a standard agency. I'll just, you know, know how many, as you know, lives you affect, and you have a lot of control and a lot of power, so I appreciate you trying to do your best. It's just that, I don't know, it just seemed like Lansing had a piece of this, and now Florida S.K. has the whole thing, that's all.
All right, Councilwoman Spitz.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I remember when we talked about this, we wanted to make sure that residents who were in the homes and who wanted to buy the homes would be given opportunities to do so. Is that, so, and you're saying that that has happened?
That is, has happened, will happen, and is happening.
So how, are, are you, so how are you working with folks, or how are you helping them find, if they need help, and are you partnering with, like, you know, Capital Area Housing Partnership has this program for homeownership, or there are some other people that kind of put them through these programs, so that they are successful when they come out of the end, not just, you know, selling the house to them and then walking away? So are you connecting them with support services to make sure that they're gonna be successful if they do decide to purchase these homes?
Yes, in the two different times that we made the offer to the residents to buy their homes, one last year, we directed them to the Capitolary Housing Partnership Program, or the Habitat for Humanity Program, and also the City of Lansing Program, that has some homebuyer education information as well. We gave them all of that information, several of them took advantage of that. As I said, we have eight individuals that are set and have been pre-approved and are ready to buy their homes. At our last meeting, we had some more individuals that said that they didn't understand that they had that opportunity, so we rebooted and said, "That's fine, we'll give you a second bite at the apple." We sent the letter out, we provided them with the same information that we'd provided to them a year ago. The Housing Commission is not a home finance organization, we do not do home finance, but we did tell them that they could work with either one of those organizations, the city, or they could go out and work with their own individual financing institution. Some folks have relationships with a bank or credit union, and they could work with those and get themselves pre-qualified to buy their home.
Well, that brings up, I'm sorry, that brings up the question of notice. So, you know, there, you said yourself that a number of, more of your residents came to you and said, "We didn't know that this was happening, and we would like to purchase your homes." So explain to me the process of notice that you went through to make sure your residents were aware that this, that the houses were gonna be sold and that they had this opportunity.
Well, we have been telling the residents in this body, in our board meetings every month, that we were on a path to utilize the Section 18 program.
That through your website, or letters?
Yep, it's in all of us. And then we have quarterly newsletters, where we've talked about it in the quarterly newsletter. We then sent a letter out, and I don't know the exact date, it was in the summer, late fall of last year, where we sent a letter to all the addresses of our scattered sites, telling them that this was the time that they needed to let us know if they were interested in buying their homes, because we were trying to figure out exactly what we were gonna put in the RFP, because RFP had to list the actual houses that were gonna be for sale, and if someone was gonna buy theirs, we wanted to pull that out of the process. And so we went through that process one time, and every address that we had got that letter. Forty responded, so we know the letter got to our residents. However, when we had our second meeting here in April, we assumed that all the residents that wanted to buy their houses, it already indicated they wanted to buy the houses, we found out at the meeting that that wasn't true. So instead of just saying, "Hey, too bad, too late," we gave them a second bite at the apple, and we provided them a couple of weeks in which they could indicate to us again that they were interested. As I said, I think we have 40 or so that have indicated, roughly in that number, and then we directed them to go out and go ahead and get their financing, and they have till, I think, July 1st, as a, as a date in which they can come back to us with some financing that shows that they're ready to buy their house.
My final question is, on your RAD project, I might have one more, but on your RAD project, the 3,200 South Washington, is that going to be, is that transitioning to seniors? And if it is, what about the people who are currently in those apartments that don't qualify? What will be, what will happen to them?
Okay, it's, first of all, Congressman, we call it Capital City now?
I know.
I know, we just want everybody to use the name. And it is a senior preference building, which means that when you go on the waitlist, if you are 55 and older, then you have a preference to move to the top of the waitlist. It doesn't mean that if you're below 55, that you can't still move into the building. Folks that are already in the building continue to live in the building, there's no change, they can stay there as long as they want, until they either fall out of compliance, they don't qualify to live there anymore, or they're no longer in good standing. So those are the only two reasons that they would be asked to leave.
So, Mr. President, I have a question about Holy Cross, but I'll wait till everybody, because there might be more about the scattered housing, but I do have a question about. So I'll defer till that.
That's fine. I have a quick question before I move on to Vice President Wood. So when we talk about this window that was open to express interest, and that we also have this July 1st date with regards to them being able to get their financing around, is that one in the same? Are those two, were those two different windows and dates? Yeah, I guess my question is, is the, is the window to express interest and get the ball rolling, is that closed for these individuals?
Yes, it ended in the end of April. They had three weeks in which to, in which to indicate an interest. I'll be honest with you, we took letters all the way through the next week after that, and frankly, we had a conversation last week, if someone indicated today that they wanted to, there's not really a reason to say no, as long as they get their financing around by July 1st. And even at that point, if someone comes to us on an individual basis, and they're close, and they're making progress, we will work with that person on an individual basis and they're making progress, we will work with that person on an individual basis to continue to move that process forward. So while we have to have deadline dates, because everybody has to have a deadline so you can continue to move your business forward, it doesn't mean that that's an actual drop dead date. Um, we're going to work, we're going to work with people. But there is going to come a point where the buyer wants to know, what am I buying? And we have to be able to tell him, here are the houses that you're buying. Here's the houses that are not going to be available.
All right, thank you. Uh, we have Vice President Wood, Councilman Brown, and then Councilman Daniels.
Doug, um, I, I want to stay with the scattered housing. Um, I think, well, I don't think, I am somewhat disappointed with the fact that what I'm hearing from you, the type of effort that was made to, um, educate and to inform and to let, um, those individuals that are living in those houses have an opportunity to purchase those. And the reason I say that is because I do remember the discussion that we had here. And we did talk about the fact that, that even though there was the potential of this being sold out in lump sums, our goal for council was you had individuals and, and some of those had, have been living in those scattered houses for 10, 15, 20 years. You know, and this was their home. Now, I understand that, um, even having this entity, S and K Investments, that doesn't mean that they'll necessarily lose that opportunity. But understanding and, and coming from, um, the background that I come, have come from, um, I know that it would have been difficult for my parents to figure out how to purchase a home and how to go about that. And part of this discussion is in the middle of COVID. You know, so you have so much uncertainty out there, especially those that might have been working, if they were able to work, minimum wage jobs and that, and understanding whether they were going to have a future or not before moving forward. Having said that, um, this company that we're talking about, as you indicated, um, has asked you to possibly manage or, you know, the Housing Commission, not you personally, but the Housing Commission, to manage these properties. If you choose not to, do we have any idea who they will, um, have manage them? Um, is there, will there be anything in the sale that will have any requirements on who would manage them and how they will be managed?
Well, the, the how they will be managed is always a difficult question. But what we can do, um, is that we can vet the management company and there are several very good management companies in the state. I have worked with and worked alongside, um, several of those. Um, and, and all of them would probably jump at the chance to manage 230 houses. Um, so yes, we will vet that management company and make sure that it's a management company that has previously done a good job, just like we did when we did our vetting of the purchase, um, to make sure that that, those folks are el, are not only eligible, but are qualified to do the kind of management that's going to be necessary. Remember, we're providing the project-based voucher. So if we don't manage the property, we're going to be working with the management company, because we will be doing the voucher before they move into the unit and get managed. And we will be inspecting the units, uh, as well as a part of our voucher issuance.
But there's no guarantee that once you vet that group, that six months down the line, and we've all seen some of these properties out there, that they change management companies like they're changing clothes.
Some of them do.
And so that there is the potential that after you've vetted this, you're done with it, that there's the potential of them changing management companies to ones that are not as reliable.
That's possible. I don't know why they would want their properties to not be managed well, though.
Well, we've seen that around the city as well.
We have, and, and some of those companies are, and some of those landlords are folks that live in the City of Lansing, because we deal with landlords every day.
And, and I'm not saying that they're not, you know, I'll be the first to point them out. I'm not saying that they're not. Um, I guess I could go on and on, but we.
Well, and, and I want to be respectful, uh, Mr. Fleming, but you have to understand the heartburn up here. We deal, um, every single day, we deal with, um, I, I don't know if they're inept or just criminal, uh, but management companies, um, that absolutely just, and as Vice President Wood said, changes hands so often, it's hard to, to keep track of who's managing what. Uh, but the, the conditions that some of our folks are forced to live in um, throughout our community is, is absolute criminal, period.
I agree.
And so there is some heartburn, um, you know, when we have these kind of conversations. Uh, but I'll circle back to some of my thoughts and questions.
Look, I, let me just add to that.
Yeah, please do.
Look, look, no one's been more responsible about proving affordable housing in the city than the Lansing Housing Commission. I have numbers in here of investments that we've made. The investments, the money that we're going to get from the sale of these houses are going to be additional investments that we're going to make in the city to improve the affordable housing. We've added 200 units by partnering with other developers of brand-new affordable housing in the city. I agree with you, President, in saying, one of my goals is to create enough volume of affordable housing in the city that if you're not doing a good job, that resident has an option. They can leave that crappy house and they can move into something that's nice and well-managed. The problem with affordable housing is never about ownership, it's always about management. Always, because there's lots of owners out there that have bad managers, and there's, there's market rate that has bad managers. It's about how you manage the property. I don't disagree with that. But I'll also say that we have worked hard to invest in the housing, to give our residents in the city options, and the money that we're going to get from the sale of this house will continue to provide additional options for those folks so they're not stuck, as, as you talked about.
And I, and I hope that as we continue to invest in, um, you know, again, we'll go back to doors and keys and we look to increase that, that number, um, that we, considering, you and I have had a number of conversations, um, you know, off the record and on the record and everything else, uh, but with regards to, uh, the reality of, of concentrating poverty. Um, and, you know, when we look at, that was one of our concerns two years ago, was that we would be, um, you know, looking at the relocation of individuals from scattered site homes, uh, sometimes in, um, you know, in areas that are not depressed economically, um, to larger, denser developments that are almost always positioned in economically depressed areas. Because we understand the reality, uh, that folks that are essentially, you know, trying to ascend from, um, you know, I should say ascend, um, or, or at least help, help their posterior ascend right from that. Um, it's, it's incredibly difficult, again, when we, when we concentrate and we warehouse in that way. So I really hope that, you know, as we look to increase the housing stock, not just in the City of Lansing, but in the region, tri-county region really, and we're talking about affordable housing, um, that we, we keep that at the forefront of our minds, that, you know, so many times, these larger developments just simply don't work.
I agree.
They don't fulfill their promise.
And that's why our investments in the city have not concentrated poverty. We have 230 units all over the city. Our four properties are located in four different areas of the city. Our investment, one of them is downtown, where we're going to bring new units into. Some of the new developments we're talking about are downtown, where there's not really affordable housing, and we have one in East Lansing right now. So I, I totally agree with the concept and there's no one that's more anti-congregating poverty than, than, uh, the Lansing Housing Commission.
Here's, all right, thank you. Uh, what we're going to do is we're going to go to Vice President Wood for a follow-up. We then have, uh, Councilman Brown, Councilman Brian Daniels, and then we have Councilwoman Spitzley with a question on Holy Cross.
I, I appreciate your comments, Doug, but you have to remember, I've been here long enough to understand where the Lansing Housing Commission was and where we are today. And I also remember being on this body as we looked at page after page after page after page of code compliance, um, problems that your properties had and the fact that they weren't even getting inspected properly. You're here before us today, giving us your best interpretation of what's going to happen. That doesn't mean that you'll be here tomorrow. Hopefully, you know, you, you will be. But again, what we're looking at is over a course, not just this one snapshot in time, but this body is looking over the course of what we've seen with the Lansing Housing Commission.
And while I appreciate that, Vice President Wood, I have set processes in place so that we can keep moving forward. I can't talk about what happened in the past. I can tell you that all those code compliance things are gone. I meet with Brian McGrane on a regular basis. We have processes, spreadsheets, checkpoints to make sure that those happen. Can those be undone? Yes, they can. But anything can be undone. But I can't move the agency forward with the thought that maybe this could be undone. We have to put things in place to make sure that we can move forward to the best of our ability at this time. I can't predict the future.
And, and I'm not saying that that isn't something, that, that you're not correct with that. But you also have to understand that, again, you know, right now, I think that you're being more defensive on this over the fact that we, as a body, have seen other, you might not think it's coming across that way, but I think some of us might feel that way. We are trying to ask these questions based on these different experiences that we've had.
I understand that.
All right, Councilman Brown.
Uh, thank you so much. Uh, I, I concur a lot with Councilwoman Wood on very disappointing in the timeframe. Someone's been living in their house for, you know, several years and then in the midst of COVID, they might have lost their job or their income is even lower. And it sounds like, which I appreciate the effort, um, to, um, you know, put a letter in the mail. Um, you know, I don't know if we could have knocked 200 doors or made phone calls too, to make sure everyone had the opportunity. And then also, if we did have a group of partner agencies that provide support services, like the ones that you named, then maybe we could have had a campaign ahead of time and said, hey, let's make sure people know that there's support in place. Additionally, uh, being from Lansing, having several friends and helped them over the years doing credit rebuilds and things like that, so they could get their first time home. That doesn't happen in three weeks or four weeks. A lot of times, it's hand-holding and saying, you know, you can't do this, you can't accomplish your goal, and this is the way forward. And so I'm glad that we had 40 people responded the second round. In the first round, you know, eight became approved out of 240. That's about, I think, 10% would be 20, so you're looking at, you know, about fi, 4% or 5%. So how many more maybe could have been credit-eligible? Or if there was, you know, the financial support, um, that we could have had a better result with that? The timeframe is what's disappointing to me, not that you all did not make the effort, but people who are living in public housing probably were not prepared to say, okay, in two months, I'm ready to buy a house.
I appreciate the concern, but I'll also tell you that, as we indicated, that we're not done working in the community to provide affordable housing homeownership programs. With the funds that we're going to get from the sale of the houses, we are already in talks and working with Habitat for Humanity, Capital Area Housing Partnership, Dr. Parker, other groups who are working to increase homeownership in the city. It's not going to stop when we sell the houses. That, it's just.
Mr. Fleming, that is fantastic, but in the report that you provided is not a key focal point. It is a subset, section. So that's something that we're excited about. Maybe you can elaborate on it further in the future, so we can see that, how focused you are on, on that. Um, but it looks like if I was, you know, to her point about notices, uh, Councilwoman Spitzley, it would seem that the bare, you know, bare minimum was, was provided as far as getting people embraced to say, hey, you know, you have an opportunity to truly purchase your home. Um, what I wanted to talk further about, though, is my question is leading is, I, I love the proposal, I'm very impressed with the level of strategy that's been in here, um, you know, as far as organizational vision and how to, or what direction that you believe Lansing Housing Commission should go as far as its housing and how to be transformative with the financing and the ability to deliver higher-quality programming uh, to each unit. However, what I did not see is, um, what are the downfalls and potential concerns? I've never seen a proposal where it's just listing benefits. I have not seen in this proposal a strategy, um, where, um, operational strategy that identifies the plan relating to the, the residents and the, and the tenants. So when you switch them from this RAD to the Section 8 and all of that, there's no additional paperwork, there's no processing. The challenges that I've seen, you know, in the, these type of transitions and even, you know, to, to your point that you're going to bring up, is when a transition takes place, the residents are left without, you know, being able to access or there's gaps in services, or it's a nightmare, or, you know, it's just stressing people out. I've spoken with a few different, uh, groups and case managers, uh, you know, from some of these community partners with this emergency transition and, and I have not been pleased or, you know, to be quite honest, have never returned, uh, got a return call from a few different groups at all, period, to this day. So when we're making it seem like this, even, and I know there's a history here, but I'm talking about now with Jeff Brown on this, uh, in council. I personally have not seen everything run smooth where I feel confident and comfortable. Instead, I've had, had to go out of my own pocket and help feed some people who are homeless and try and, you know, do a fundraiser myself to get people from, um, off the streets into, uh, you know, homeless or hotel services. So this is wonderful, but could you talk about, uh, more resident-based? You know, what we're concerned about is when we're doing all of this moving parts, how, what is the process for the resident and how has their life changed through that process?
Two things. One, as I indicated in the proposal, both under the RAD process and the Section 18 process, there is a, a very detailed section of resident rights. We literally hired a third-party consultant when we went through the RAD process who assisted us in making sure that we met all the residents' rights. We have already moved 250-plus residents in this city from one unit to another unit based on these resident rights, helping them fill out, if they had to change their address relative to their utilities, to their cable television. We've packed boxes, we've offered all free supplies, we provided moving services. These are all part of the resident rights that are part of that process. Under the Section 18 process, there's another set of resident rights.
So in this proposal here, is that identified?
There's no movement here. These residents are going to stay right where they are. The only thing, literally, the resident's going to have to do different than what they've done previously, because they're qualifying for the program they already do with us. The fact that they have to stay in good standing, they already have to do with us. The only thing that's new is that when they write their monthly check, they're going to write it to a new landlord.
So there's no change as far as they didn't have to sign from RAD to Section 8? They didn't have to do any paperwork?
No, not any different paperwork than they do today. They sign a lease with us, they'll sign a lease with the new company. They fi, they file an annual recertification to qualify for the program. They'll do their annual recertification and qualify for the program. Literally, the only different thing they're going to have to do is to write the check to a different entity.
Okay, that answers that question then. And, um, lastly, we talked about, we didn't get, I, I've seen this before where we don't get a, you know, a response, whether we're saying it's a local response or whatever. So what effort was taken or, you know, campaign was put together to say, hey, we're going to sell these homes, we really want people to buy local? Uh, because we know as a community, when people own locally, you know, the investment, the passion is there because the neighbor could be your grandma or your family member or the street that you grew up on versus an outside entity. Um, so what was the focus, when I know we're saying, well, this is all we have left now, but what was the true focus? Or what did you all do to give priority to people local?
Remember, Councilman, we're selling these as affordable housing, so we're not going to sell them market rate to where someone can move into it and not be subsidized anymore. Part of our commitment to this body and to the mayor's office was that we weren't going to lose a unit of affordable housing. So your description of someone moving into the house into the neighborhood where my mom, aunt, or grandma lives is correct, but you're talking about a market-rate sale. Um, that's not going to be an affordable housing sale.
Let me clarify, because I, I know affordable housing, I'll clarify to you, sir, okay? What I'm saying is, I know several people said, oh, they're selling houses who are real estate investors who live in Lansing, for to buy 10 or 12 or 15 houses.
Right.
And they didn't feel like they had an opportunity to do so. Those that might have a few properties now and are good landlords and do a lot in the community, maybe even when we're doing, you know, our, most of, all of us do these yard cleanups every year, maybe they're right beside us cleaning up the community. But they don't feel that they were given an opportunity. So if they have the, um, feasibility to purchase, let's say, 10 of these houses, they can't make it Section 8? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that. I don't know.
You're saying only a large entity is able to afford to make the house a Section 8? When I know that's not true.
No, I'm not saying, I'm not saying.
I want to make, hold on one second. Um, we certainly, you know, we addressed, uh, Mr. Fleming when we thought he was, uh, being defensive. Um, and it was, um, getting to a situation that wasn't conducive to have a good, solid back and forth, but we could, um, exchange information and make sure that we get the information out that the public deserves. Um, so I'm going to ask that we also keep, uh, or maintain some measure of decorum um, as we, as we ask these questions, okay? Um, Mr. Fleming, go ahead.
I'm not saying that a local owner couldn't. We used a local broker. It, it was on our website for eight weeks. I, I don't know what else we could have done. We have been very public about our process. I'm not saying that one purchaser is going to be any better than someone that bought 10. What I can tell you, if you sell them 10 at a time, then eventually you're going to end up with 10 of the crappiest houses that nobody wants. Um, and so one of the advantages of selling it to a lot is that you get the good with the bad and you get all of those. I will also say, as I said earlier, we're not preventing anyone from buying houses at market rate in the city. They can continue to do that. Our houses currently, at this point. Our houses currently, at this point, we're in negotiations to sell them to one buyer based on a HUD-approved RFP process that we went through. It's the same RFP process that we go through to procure all of our services. And it has to be done in a certain way and we met all of those because again, this is a HUD program. And I can't speak to which developers knew or didn't know at this point. I can only tell you what the process was.
Thank you. All right, we have Councilman Daniels, then Vice President, I'm sorry, Vice President Wood. It was, no, it was not, it was Councilwoman Spitzley. And I just want to remind folks that we do have a lengthy agenda. It's about nine o'clock. And I think most importantly, I believe, and I could be wrong, but I think the number, or the majority of people here tonight are actually here to provide input on this issue during legislative comment. So with that being said, Councilman Daniels.
I'll be so quick, I have a couple of things. One, can you just confirm on record that you are, neither you nor any other commissioner have any stock in SK Investment Groups?
That's correct.
Okay. Second is, the $25,000 that you were looking at giving into a hotel program, I hope that you'll look at the quality of the hotels that people are being forced, that they're staying in. And I understand that this is an opportunity to not be on the street and to be housed, but the hotels themselves, I've had several, you know, concerned citizens tell me about bedbugs and other hygiene issues within these hotels. So I just hope that's something you'll look into before giving them that 25,000. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to ask a question about the process that happened in December with Holy Cross. I mean, I remember that and where, you know, those people were going to be fired via Zoom before Christmas.
They were fired.
Well, okay. And so Capital Area Housing Partners and you guys went through and you assumed that. On a sidebar, you know, I agree 100% with Councilmember Hussein when you talk about concentrated poverty, but understand those scattered houses are all over the city. And quite frankly, I've heard about neighbors of these homes harassing the residents of those homes because they live in affordable housing and because they live in those homes. And so, you know, there's always two sides to every story. Where you have residents complaining about the scattered homes, but I've also had folks who live in scattered homes alleging, you know, horrible harassment by neighbors as well. So I'd like to throw that out as well. But I'm interested in how the Holy Cross process has been going. I have heard from some of the smaller groups who do the same work in the city of Lansing and who may have worked through Holy Cross or worked through the city of Lansing, that they've had some issues with getting reimbursement on some of their payments that need to come through. Personally, and I'm just going to be blunt about it, I never really reached out to you because you're a big dog and you can take care of yourself. But some of the other smaller groups have had some issues and that. So how has that been with you as a larger entity? How's that process been?
Well, thank you for the question, and I'm not a big dog. But we have had, we have, we are funded better than a lot of the smaller nonprofits. There's no doubt about it. So we can go longer periods of time without reimbursement. And we have done that. We have not been reimbursed $1 yet for the Holy Cross program. And the renewal of the ONE program actually comes up at the end of June. And we've not gotten a dime yet. We've administered it for the, we've administered all four of the programs for the last four and a half months on our own dime. Now, we expect to get that funding at some point, but it's just something that we knew when we took it on. Not only did we take on that responsibility, but we also agreed with the Capital Housing Fund, Capital Housing Partnership, that because the HARA was such an unknown entity and the status that it was in and the state that it was in, that they didn't know what that was going to cost, they were not funded well enough to be able to support that themselves. So they asked us and we committed $100,000 of Lansing Housing Commission dollars to the HARA, support the HARA as well. So it's a process, we're still in it. It's hard for us to do our normal evaluation when we don't have the funds. What we have done is that we have tried to bring the grants that we assumed from Holy Cross, that I can tell you there were issues in the way they were being managed, to manage them more like we've managed our traditional grants over the years to bring them kind of back in line. We're not sure if we're back in line yet because we don't have the funding. We don't know how much funding we are going to get. But we have rearranged some staffing to cut down some overhead and at the same time, we have reached out to the city who is working with us to move those grants direct to HUD so that we'll get more administrative fees. So we can improve revenue at the same time that we're reducing some expenses. We feel that by doing that, we can administer those grants and continue to serve those 87 families that we assumed in January.
Councilwoman Spitzley, do you have anything else? All right. The only thing I would say is, you know, with regards to your earlier comment is, we know that that does in fact happen at times. And it's incredibly unfortunate, you know, when we're talking about the mistreatment of folks that are living in affordable housing and working to, you know, carve out a better life for them, their families, et cetera. What I would say is, we have local ordinances on the books to deal with some of our neighbors that need to be reminded, right? That it's not a crime to be poor and it's certainly not a crime to live in affordable housing and that we have an absolute charge, right, to support that population. So I would encourage whenever you hear about that type of harassment occurring that you get with the city attorney's office for guidance. Yeah, thanks so much. Doug, we really appreciate you being here. We do. I'm sure there will be additional questions people think of. Certainly, we will email those if we get other questions tonight from the gallery. If you are not able to stay, we'll make sure that we forward those your way as well. But again, we appreciate you being here.
No worries. And as always, and I know several of you have taken me up on it over the times, if you want to spend some time to tour our properties, we're more than willing to spend that time with you. Come and meet in my office if you've got additional questions. We are open to meet with anybody at any time. And you're also welcome to our board meetings each month as well, as they are a public entity as well. So thank you very much for the time tonight.
Thank you. Clerk's vote.
Okay, we are to... Comments by council members and the city clerk.
Is that it? That's where we're at?
That's where.
Councilman Garza, Councilman Daniels, Councilman Brown and Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Council President. So my second ward constituent contact meeting will be this Saturday from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. at Fire Station 44. That is 1435 East Miller Road. Once again, that is from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. The second ward constituent contact meeting this Saturday, May 14th, 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. Fire Station 44, 1435 East Miller Road. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Daniels.
All right, a couple of things. First, first ward constituent coffee hour will be May 21st, 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. at the BWL Rio Town Depot at 1201 South Washington Ave. Tomorrow, May 10th, at 5:30 p.m. is the Community Wide Neighborhood Budget Meeting at Foster Community Center, Room 213, and that's 200 North Foster. And then last is the Allen Neighborhood Center launches its 18th outdoor season. And that is May 11th, Wednesday, May 11th, 2:30 to 7:00 p.m.
All right, thank you. Councilman Brown.
Thank you. Just wanted to say that this was a great weekend for the Forest View Neighborhood Association. We were able to get together and clean up some of the neighborhood. Thank you, Councilman Garza, who supplied the tools that we needed to be successful. So it's always good to get together with neighbors and make a difference. Also, to Councilman Daniels, a reference to Allen Neighborhood Center. We congratulate Joan Nelson. We're hearing about her retirement after 25 years of pouring into our community and, you know, the east side of Lansing. So they're currently doing an executive director search. For more information, you can visit their website. I believe you can Google Allen Neighborhood Center and it'll lead you right there. But we're so blessed for the work that she's done. And then also, you know, sad to see her leave, but we all have our time. Additionally, I do want to say that we, I appreciate the Lansing Housing Commission, Doug Fleming, taking that Holy Cross program in the midst of winter. That is a very specialized program and the services as well as the federal and state requirements. And so to take that, if that group would not have said, we'll shoulder this responsibility, the impact that residents in Lansing would have seen would have been devastating, much worse than what we saw. So I believe that the Lansing Housing Commission, by, you know, adopting that program in a very short period of time and making those adjustments, actually saved lives. So I do want to say that on record. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Vice President Wood.
Thank you. You know my question, Mayor Shore. Can you tell us where we are with the first responders or guests?
Mayor Shore.
We have signed contracts with the CCLP Police. We have signed contracts with IAFF Fire. And we have signed contracts with the UAW. Each of those will have their funding go out at the next pay period. We are still in conversations with the Teamsters.
Okay, so next pay period would be...
They're different. Police and Fire, I believe, are this Friday and UAW is next Friday. Ah, there we go. So Police and Fire will get their amount this Friday and UAW will get it next Friday. It's just the next regular pay period, so we don't have to generate special check runs.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the answer.
It's on my list.
As do I. Very quickly, just announcing my constituent, our constituent contact meeting for Southwest Lansing, which will take place this Saturday at the Alfreda Schmidt South Side Community Center. We meet in the Sandy Allen Room, which is right off the parking lot, incredibly accessible. We meet from 10:00 to 12:00 noon. And this week, well, we, probably about every other month, we have kind of a featured speaker for the first maybe hour. And we always try to bring in folks that are incredibly important in terms of partnering and moving the dial on certain issues in Southwest Lansing. This Saturday, we'll actually have Carl Dorshimer in from the LEDC to talk about specifically economic development in Southwest Lansing. Because it's just, it's critical. When you look at our corridors, when you look at our nodes, when you look at some of the blight, when you look at unfortunately, some of the jobs that we've lost maybe over the past, you know, a couple of decades. And I say this often, but at every turn, we need to be talking about economic development. So we'll bring Carl in to have those conversations, but we'll also discuss city council updates as well as Southwest Lansing updates at that meeting. So we hope to see you soon.
Okay, and I have just a couple of quick things. I want to thank everyone who participated in the school village election that we had last week. It was a pretty smooth election and thanks for all of my election workers and staff who made it go so well. I also want to welcome our new intern for the council meetings. Suella Saffa is going to be with us for the next couple of months. Mayor Shore, you'll be happy to know she's a student at that other university. And with that, we are to community event announcements. If there's anyone in the audience who has a community event, I'll give you one minute to tell us the details.
Hello, Erica Lynn from The Village Lansing. We have two upcoming events. They are both in June. We've got first up, our third annual open house celebration. That is a partnership this year with the Lansing School District. So we are moving. We had it at the Capitol lawn the first two years. This year it will be on the eastern kind of lawn field area to accommodate the ceremony shuttles so that we're there when all three ceremonies get done. That is going to be Sunday, June 5th. We'll be there all day, music, food, games, prizes, giveaways, open house for all of Sexton, Everett and Eastern and also adult ed graduates. We also, on June 19th, at noon, from noon to 8:00, we have our second annual Father's Day Peace Picnic. That is going to be held at Wayne Wright Park. Waiting for my app on the Showmobile. Just soon as that processes, we'll have the Showmobile there, if you know what that is. So we'll have entertainment, music, food, great time. It's going to be a blast. That's our second annual. And if you are interested, anyone is interested, to donate, support, sponsor, volunteer, however you would like, please email thevillagelancing@gmail.com. You can message us on Facebook at The Village Lansing. Or you can visit our website, www.thevillagelancing.org if you are interested in supporting either of these events. Again, third annual open house celebration, June 5th. Eastern, second annual Father's Day Peace Picnic, Wayne Wright Park, June 19th. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we had one more person jumping up.
The Friends of Lansing Historic Cemeteries will be conducting its 15th annual giveaway as a community service project of 125 seed geraniums at the entrance to Evergreen Cemetery on Saturday, June, or May 21st, between 10:00 and 2:00. So if you have a grave at Mount Hope or Evergreen or North Cemetery and you don't have flowers and you would like to have flowers, stop by again. It's Evergreen from 10:00 to 2:00 on Saturday, the 21st, for free seed geraniums. Thank you.
Thank you. And it looks like we've got one more.
Hi, Shannon Norris from the Fledge and Fledge Foundation. This weekend, Friday night, we have two events. Both are free. So May 13th at 5:00, we have an event for harm reduction from 5:00 to 6:30. Every 30 minutes, we'll be doing a presentation. It's free for all. We'll be teaching how to use Narcan and how to use fentanyl test strips. And people who go through the training will leave with those products. Additionally, that same evening, starting at 7:00 o'clock and going until 9:30, we have a free family, all ages talent show. We've got 17 local acts already lined up. So anyone, there's still spots available as well. So anyone can come and perform for five minutes in a family-friendly atmosphere and that is free to watch. And that's at the Fledge. Both things are Friday night. Our address is 1300 Eureka Street. And parking on the street and in the lot between us and Ronald McDonald House. And if I might, we're also having a really cool thing, June 11th, from 12:00 to 4:00. We're putting on a science fair. And it is also free, all ages, family-friendly. And people can sign up individually or with their family, in a group, kids, adults. And I am looking for judges for that. So if anybody's interested in science and wants to be a part of that, I'm looking for people to score the projects. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, so we are to now registration for public comment on legislative matters, which includes items 4 through 21 on the agenda. That's the blue sheet in the back. We'll give you about another minute to fill one out with Suella. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mayor Shore.
Thank you. I will be quick. I missed the prayer, the opening prayer. I'm not sure if you recognize that Pastor Jacques McDaniel passed away. So I hope we'll keep his family in their memory, in our memories. Yeah, at the funeral. Very sad. He was a wonderful gentleman. You probably all knew him. I want to thank the wonderful folks in Old Town. Councilman Daniels and I did what I think was the fastest 12 ribbon cuttings I have ever done in my life. But we were able to do ribbon cuttings for many of the businesses that are opening or expanding in Old Town and there's a lot going on. So I want to thank all those companies, including Bradley's, which I know had a grand opening this weekend and the place looks incredible. So I want to congratulate the owners. And Councilman Daniels' jacket is from Bradley's. He was eyeing all of the gear there, so he probably dropped quite a bit, so.
I thought old-fashioned syrup, does that make sense?
An old-fashioned syrup. No, no fashion syrup. So, but congratulations. It was, it's a wonderful place. And as we talked about, it's going to be an anchor in Old Town, so I'm really excited. I want to congratulate all involved with the Frib on the ribbon cutting. That's going to be exciting for our region over at MSU. I want to wish good luck to our plumbers and pipe fitters friends as they compete in several different categories. Councilman Garza, it's my understanding that someone from Lansing won the HVAC, so I'm very excited to hear that. And he's going to compete statewide, nationally. So hopefully they'll bring back the gold for us. I want to congratulate the Juneteenth Committee, who had a wonderful event with Ms. Opal Lee, grandmother to Juneteenth, just a wonderful wealth of knowledge. Lansing Common had their first soccer match. I almost said game, match. So anyone who was able to get to that, I hope you'll check out our Lansing Common Soccer. Unfortunately, their opponent backed out, so they had a scrimmage and celebrity soccer. So I got to play. Councilman Jackson was there watching. Councilman Jackson was there watching. Tried to get him to play, but he had kids, and I actually scored a goal, which I'm pretty sure they let in. So I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure the goalie let that one in, but it was very nice. Call your mayor's score. That's right. The only thing I have is the ARPA money, which we have already discussed, so that is it for me, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Okay, we are to public comment on legislative matters, and I mentioned that it's items 4 through 21. The first couple of those are public hearings. Item 4 is the City of Lansing Fiscal Year 2022 to 2023 Budget, and Item 5 is a noise special permit on South Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard.
All right. Vice President Wood, do you have anything to add for the fiscal year 2022, 2023 proposed budget?
What we're looking at is a budget of $154.8 million of general fund dollars. The citywide budget is 2 million, or 2,241 million point six, which is the citywide, which includes all non, all non-general fund dollars. This will, we have 921 employees, an increase of eight are proposed in this budget, and we will be using $9,500,000 of ARPA dollars to help with revenues. Our revenues are projected at $145.3 million that we'll be receiving this year.
All right, thank you. And Councilwoman Spitzley, with regard to the noise special permit.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I, Alec has been so patient. Alec Malvidas is, is in the audience if we have any questions from the City of Lansing. You can come down. I'm just going to give a brief blurb, so if they have any questions. But what this is, this is a noise waiver for work that's going to be done on the railroad area on the Martin Luther King, down by Martin Luther King. They're going to be, that's going to happen in, starting July 5th, and that intersection will be totally shut down for 35 days. What are we doing tonight is, we're having the public hearing tonight, and we're also taking action on this noise waiver, and we're doing that, and this isn't generally how we like to do it on council, but we're doing it because of the short timeframe, and that we need to, you know, get out there and get this done. In addition to while they're also doing work on Martin Luther King, we know that they have sent out notices, and they've gone above and beyond. They're required to do a 500-foot radius of notice, but if there are people outside the 500-foot radius and that they were adjacent, they were provided notice as well. Let's see. They need, they need, potentially need Saturdays because of the contract with the railroad. They don't know if they're definitely going to need them, but they may need them, and that's one of the reasons why they are requesting the noise waiver. And so that's the information I have. If there's any other questions of Alec?
Councilmember Spitzley, you did real good, except for one thing. As far as the construction contract with the contractor and the arrangement we have with the state of Michigan for removing the tracks, they are required to work Saturdays because, so, just a little clarification there.
All right, seeing no questions.
Thank you, Alec. See, you stayed here, and nobody wants to ask questions. If you hadn't stayed here, there would have been like a bajillion questions.
That's, that's a good thing.
But thank you.
Thanks for being here. We appreciate it.
Okay, first we have Travis Van Portfleet, followed by Eric Staley.
All right, thank you. Good evening. The reason I'm addressing you guys tonight is that there's obviously the noise permit coming up, and I wanted to voice my support for supporting that in regards to working on Saturdays, because face it, as we know, we're in Michigan, and the weather for these kind of projects can be very unpredictable at times. And I understand how unpredictable these jobs can be, because my, my father was the former director of MDOT, and those contracts could be Mark Van Portfleet. And I, I know that weather can be very unpredictable, and we've seen that these kind of jobs can take time. And I believe that getting it done as fast as we can, so we don't have to clog up the, especially MLK, which is, as we know, one of the busiest sections of our city. And with that being said, I think we should move forward in giving the, the company, the people providing the project, what they need to speed it up as quickly as possible, because as we know, the faster we can get back to doing things regularly, the more we can get on with doing our stuff. So that's what I wanted to voice my approval for, and I know what some, there's a lot on both sides that could be said for either way, but I fully support going forward with it, so thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Eric Staley, followed by Chris Keck.
Good evening. My name's Eric Staley with Hoffman Brothers, project manager for this project. Filed the request for the noise waiver. As Alec did say, it is required for the rail section of this project, and just for the overall project with rain days such as last week, we'd lost two to three days on other projects, and our sunny day now is worth three days in October. If we can have the additional day, we will shorten our timeframe on these streets and shorten it rather than dragging it out for an additional day. I don't have any other, I can answer any questions if there are, but...
Thank you. Chris Keck, and then Loretta Stanaway.
Good evening. I am living in the affected area of the construction currently on MLK and Mount Hope. I would like to say that I'm not in support of this. It's kind of open-ended. It doesn't say anything about it just pertaining to this year. If the CSO project goes past this year, does it allow Saturdays next year, the year after? There's enough traffic as is during the weekdays when they're doing their construction with Saturday, with everybody being off work, with the children being around. It's going to clog up the thoroughfare. I understand the need for construction to move forward as quick as possible. Weather was stated. We don't know the weather. If we give Saturdays and we have tons of rain, that doesn't speed the project up any. It doesn't guarantee anything. You know, I work hard during the week. I kind of like my weekends, and I just would, would say that the, you know, maybe if we look into it, I don't understand, you know, all that's going on. The Saturday needed to work on the railroad track wasn't stated in this as well, so not knowing that and putting it out there kind of puts it at a disadvantage to understanding the full project. So if they put that in there, explained a little more, we could be maybe in favor of it. If it isn't pertaining to the rail, I would say nothing on Saturdays. If it's just to the rail side of things, let's do it. Let's get it done. But, you know, I think more needs to be explained in this stuff when it's put out as well. So, thanks for your time.
Thank you, and our final speaker for this portion is Loretta Stanaway.
I just wanted to express our appreciation for the city parks director, the mayor, and the council working with us to pull the language that we objected to in the ballot proposal for North Cemetery, and for the mayor's verbal commitment that whatever proceeds there are, if there is a sale, would be dedicated to North Cemetery. So we thank you for your support.
Thank you. We are to the referral of the public hearings, number four, the budget.
Committee of the whole.
And number five, the noise special permit.
Place on file.
Okay, we are to ordinances for passage. We have an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan to amend the Lansing Codified Ordinances by amending Chapter 1300, Sections 1300-07, 1310, and 1311 to update the ordinance to reflect changes in laws and rules in the recently adopted Form-Based Zoning Code. It's read a second time by its title. The ordinance was reported from the Committee of the Whole, and it's on the order of immediate passage.
All right. Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. This ordinance reflects two changes. One would be that if an applicant receives a conditional approval to receive a license but fails to obtain the license within 24 months of the date of conditional approval, the city clerk may revoke the conditional approval and deny the licensure. It also then aligns the zoning from our previous zoning classifications to our form-based classifications. And with those explanations, I would move the passage of the ordinance and answer any questions or direct them to the clerks, since he's the one that helped put this forward.
All right. There's a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing and hearing none. Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Certainly. Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Daniels.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Spatafor. Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Wood.
Yes, and I would ask for immediate...
Yes, zero nays. I don't believe we can do that with zoning.
That's great. You're right. This is zoning.
So we are to the consent agenda.
Vice President Wood.
Okay, thank you. And on the consent agenda, we will be pulling Item 13, which is the grant application. We will also be pulling the reappointment for Beth Graham. We have also acted on the appointment for the Parks Board, and with that, unless there's anyone else, then I would start on the consent agenda. All right. The consent agenda is a tribute for CADA for their 50th anniversary, and Councilmember Brian Daniels will be presenting that at the, at the presentation that they're going to be having. Second is the noise, special noise permit, and as questioned during the public comment, this would be in effect from May 14th, 2022, through November 4th, 2023. So it is for the length of the CSO project that's there. Next is the principal shopping district special assessment, public hearing, and that would be scheduled for May 23rd. Next is the grant acceptance for funds from the Board of Water and Light and the Capital Area Transit Authority to the Black History Mobile Museum. This will be part of the Juneteenth celebration. This is a grant for $7,500, and there's no city match with that. Next is the grant application for the National Cities League of Cities for the city innovation ecosystem. This is a grant for $15,000, and there is no city match with that. Next is a Michigan Department of Environmental Great Lakes and Energy Recycling Marketing Development. This is a grant for $77,713 to be worked with East Lansing, and there is no city match with that. There is in-kind staff that is attributed to the match. Lastly, is setting the public hearing for the Local Development Finance Authority Tax Incremental Finance and Development Plan Amendment for the Lansing Regional Smart Zone, and that public hearing would be on June 13th. With that, I would move the consent agenda.
All right. There is a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing, hearing, seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we are to resolutions for action and carrying forward the items pulled from consent. We have Item 13, the natural resources application.
Councilman Spatafor.
Thank you, Mr. President. The item before you is actually we have to adopt a substitute, so I've moved the substitute, which actually changes the amount from 183,000, 183,500. So I'll move the substitute.
All right. On the motion to adopt the substitute, is there further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Councilman Spatafor.
Okay, now I will move the resolution. It's a resolution to apply for grant funding through Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund for an amount of $183,500 to develop a grant, develop an outdoor venue at Burchard Park, which is their Branky Fish Ladder, basically a permanent outdoor entertainment venue at the, at the park there. The community foundation will be providing the local dollars for it, and the only reason this is being pulled from consent is that the revised amount came back, and it was $500 more expensive than we thought it was going to be, so we had to have the right application amount on our application. I would move that resolution.
All right. There's a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, also pulled forward from consent is Item 15, Beth Graham for the Board of Water and Light reappointment.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. This is the reappointment of Beth Graham for the second ward member of the Board of Water and Light for a term to expire June 30th, 2026. This came out of Committee of a Whole. Beth was here. We had an opportunity to talk to her about her term, and with that, I would move the resolution.
All right. There's a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we have Items 17, Make Safe or Demolish for Deerfield Avenue property.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. Before us, we have a resolution for 3601 Deerfield. We have had a couple of public hearings on this. We have talked about the fact that there was some question in ownership, and because of that, we reposted and did another public hearing. During our public safety meeting, we had Jerry Duncan...
Dunham.
Dunham, and who is the chief building inspector. He spoke to the fact that there has been additional damage to the property since our last information that we had received from him. He also stated on the record that he felt that this property was in imminent danger of collapse, and that there was the potential that this could be a hazardous property. So with that, the committee voted for a 30-day make safe or demolish. Again, in order for owners to move forward, they would need to get, to have engineered building documents provided to the Building and Safety Department, which at any time, they can do that during the 30 days, but again, this is 30 days because of the testimony of the chief building inspector. So with that, I would move for the make safe or demolish of this property.
All right. There's a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we have Item 19, the lease agreement with Lansing Shuffleboard LLC.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. This is a fourth amendment to the lease agreement for the Lansing Shuffleboard. What this does is, as Councilmember, or as President Hussein explained during the Committee of a Whole meeting, changes the area by increasing one section by an additional 14 feet that would allow for another shuffleboard court to be built, and then reduces it by the area that was part of a public, public property. And so, again... And so, um, again, this is the fourth amendment and with that, I would move, uh, the resolution.
All right, there's a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Nay.
Motion carries.
Okay, item twenty, community development block grant plan.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, um, President Hussein. As we all know, this is the time that we pass the, uh, community development, um, block grant. Um, we have had, uh, numerous presentations about this. We also, um, this is the year that we also pass the five-year plan. Um, the figures that are in the plan are sent on, um, to the federal government, then they respond back and those numbers might change and that resolution then would come back to us to make those amendments, but we are required to have this in before we pass our budget. And our, um, budget will be looking at passing, um, next Monday on the sixteenth. So with that, I would move the community development block grant consolidated plan for, um, twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-six along with their, um, fiscal year budget for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
All right, on the motion, is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And item, uh, thirty, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, item twenty-one, the proposal to, uh, place on the ballot, the sale of a portion of North Cemetery.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you. Uh, what we have before us is, um, we are required for any sale of, um, park property or riverfront property, um, dedicated park property to, um, allow the voters to have an opportunity to, to vote on whether there should be a sale of the property or not. Um, there, um, there has been, um, interest in purchasing that property to complete a development, um, that is adjacent, um, to this property. Um, and so what we are being asked to do is to place it on the ballot to allow the voters the opportunity to decide whether they would like to sell the property or not. And with that, I would move the, um, ballot proposal.
On the ballot proposal.
And this would be on the November.
August.
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 August ballot. We'll make the August ballot. All right, thank you.
Yep, absolutely. On the, um, motion, sorry, is there further discussion? Uh, Councilman Jackson and Vice President Wood.
When in doubt, let the people vote.
Vice President Wood.
Um, I won't be supporting this and for the same reasons that I said during, uh, the committee of a whole. Um, the gentleman that is proposing this, um, asking about the, the purchase of this property came before this board on a rezoning and talked about the fact that, um, he wanted the property. At that time, um, this board made it clear to him that we weren't in the process of selling that property and talked about his, um, rezoning, whether, you know, he wanted to continue to move forward. He indicated that he did, that he would be able to make this work without, um, this particular, uh, piece of property. This isn't as if the city had gone out and done a, a survey of their properties and said, okay, we need to look at selling off these because we're not using these, these, this was in, uh, initiated by this, uh, particular individual. So with that, I won't be supporting this.
All right, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Nay.
Motion carries.
Okay, we are to, um, speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. That's the yellow form in the back and if you, uh, would like to address the city council, um, please give your yellow form in the next minute to Suella. And in the meantime, we are to reports of city officers, boards and commissions.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you. At this time, I would move that all items be considered as being read in full and that the proper referrals be made by you, Mr. President. That, I would move that.
All right, there's a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we have items from the clerk minutes of boards and commissions.
Place on file.
Uh, polling place changes for all precincts in Lansing.
Committee of the whole.
A general fund status report for the third quarter.
Committee of the whole.
And employment vacancy factor report for the third quarter.
Committee of the whole.
And executive order twenty twenty-two oh two, public art policy and rescinding the arts and, mayor's arts and culture commission.
Committee of the whole.
Uh, we have items from the mayor, uh, sole source purchase, uh, for, um, ICSO fi, fifty-eight hundred samplers.
Ways and means.
Um, two items related to the recodification of the codified ordinances.
Both will go to committee of the whole.
Uh, grant acceptance for eviction diversion initiative.
Ways and means.
Uh, we have three reappointments to the, or appointments and reappointments to the human relations and community services board, Jody Washington, Paul Dripcheck and Frank Lee.
Uh, city operations.
We have an appointment of Emily Linden to the Potter Park Zoo Board.
City operations.
Uh, two items relative to, uh, an ordinance to amend the property maintenance code.
Public safety.
Um, we have two items relative to a noise special permit, uh, for, um, the culvert replacement on Grand River Avenue east of Delta River.
Um, committee of the whole. And city operations.
Do you want them to different places?
Yeah, I think so. Yes. If I have to change it, I will.
Okay. Um, communications and petitions, we have a notice from Liquor Control Commission, sleepwater, spirits and ale for a new small distiller, distiller license.
City operations.
Uh, liquor control commission, uh, AVI liquor transfer ownership, um, with Sunday sales permit.
Uh, city operations.
And another notice from Liquor Control Commission for Pablo's Pandaria, um, transferring the location and municipality.
City operations.
Um, claim of appeal, uh, Malik Bala for, uh, trash and, uh, notice fees at two twenty-five East Hazel.
City operations.
And communication from Vicki Miller regarding, um, street conditions and colonial, colonial townhouses community.
Public safety.
Communication from Kyle Rashad regarding budget policies.
Uh, committee of the whole.
And the tri-county office on aging, uh, area plan summary and hearing notice.
And place on file.
We are to remarks by council members.
Councilmembers, do we have any remarks? Nope. Quick swap.
Uh, remarks by the mayor.
Mayor Shore.
Uh, we are to public comment on city government-related matters. First, we have Loretta Stanaway followed by Paula Simon.
Help us. Michael Lynn followed by Erica Lynn.
Good evening. Late evening. Um, first of all, I want to commend you all for asking those questions of Doug Fleming. Um, it was exciting to see you all excited a little bit about this very serious issue. Uh, looking at those slides, I could see why it's pretty easy to get confused about what the impact is going to be on the community here. Uh, so I hope you all don't take all that as the only information that you take in. Uh, one slide though, that I thought was very damning was that it was sixty percent of the South Side that we're talking about, which we know is, uh, predominantly, I should say, a lower income and a lot of our black and brown folks live there. Um, but also looking into this RFP process, uh, just seems concerning that only two people actually got through that process. I don't know how that went. These are questions I'm giving you all maybe to think about. Um, I remember two years ago when this conversation first came up and I remember the conversation surrounding it. I remember Brian T G asked about with, you know, the transfer of ownership from, uh, LHC to HUD or HOD, that was going to go. And I remember there, there being a bunch of conversations surrounding what that would mean for the power of the city over top of these houses. And, um, and Carol Wood, or, uh, Vice President Wood spoke on, you know, the sleight of hand by the, by the man that wants to buy some of that cemetery. And, uh, as you were saying that, I was thinking that felt like a sleight of hand. We came in here, uh, two years ago and it kind of just pushed through because we were thinking, oh, they kept telling us this, they're just going to buy it for a dollar, won't be no big deal, uh, that, you know, it's just going to give us access to this funding and then here we go with the bait and switch and now, uh, some, some southern group is going to come in here, yank a bunch of houses up. So everything that he said is whatever it is, but I, I look at Logan Square, you know, I grew up on the South End on Hillcrest and Marley with the King, man, and Logan Square was full of everything. And then, uh, you know, it just dilapidated down and dilapidated down and then now it's owned by somebody who lets the roof fall through and leaky, everything, you know, uh, so, you know, just be, be cautious of that. And the question that kept asked, like, why couldn't we have gotten local investors? We got a lot of great ones here, uh, that could have put some money into these places and, um, done what's right. Secondary to that, the credit, obviously, uh, the conversations surrounding that, I mean, I've, I've, I'm forty years old, I've worked a, a ton of great careers and had some decent money and still haven't been able to buy a home, you know, and so it's just a tough knot. I mean, you go through months and months and months of rigmarole to try to get to that point and it's just not easy. So to throw that on somebody during a pandemic, it, it is, it's ridiculous to Jeff Brown's point and this, the timing is terrible. Uh, and then he had spoke on managing the houses and I think that that's probably how these houses got to where they are because we just can't manage this amount of houses. So why would we sell it to somebody else and take, you know, whatever comes from that and then leave it in the same people's hands to manage? It just didn't make any sense to me. Um, so that's it, man. I appreciate y'all, uh, giving that. It was the first time I seen you all make somebody sweat, so congratulations to you.
Thank you. Next, we have Erica Lynn followed by Michael Mercer.
So, um, first thing I wanted to really address was the presentation was really long and it was pretty confusing and it used a lot of numbers and statistics, a lot of conversations surrounding, you know, the fiscal nature of it and the strategy and all of that behind it coming from the vantage point of, um, LHC and why we should do this. Um, the one slide that was completely missing was the effort that was, that should have been put into making sure that the residents that were impacted not only just knew about this, because I have a huge issue with that. Too often systems, um, it's not enough to send two letters through snail mail to let someone know what is happening to them. They're already being impacted by something they had no say in, this is through no fault of their own. It's not enough to just say FYI and here's your one opportunity and maybe we'll give you a second one and brag about it because we did give you a second bite at the apple. You need to make sure that people not only know about it, but they understand it. They understand what's happening, they understand what their options are and they intimately understand what their options are because everybody's capacity to handle something like this is different. People have lives, people are working multiple jobs, they have kids, they have sick family members, they're caretakers, so their capacity to handle something like this, this could be the tipping point that they just cannot take. So three weeks is not a long time. I've gone three weeks not answering a text message and an email that I have just meant to every single day, but things just get ahead of you, things, you know, life gets ahead of you. So something of this nature, they could have absolutely put more effort into making sure that they had all of their options, that they understand it and to, thank you, Councilmember Brown for, you know, we have to be really PC with, with them, but I felt like the defensiveness and the indignant nature that he came in here with was extremely misplaced. It was also very disrespectful because it doesn't matter how you can fiscally explain something and tell us how much it makes sense financially and economically, just because you can substantiate in that way does not make it right. And it also doesn't make it right for our city and for our, our community. We know what localized focused poverty does. That is the goal. We always talk about when you have a goal, you work backwards. Well, two years ago, they had a goal. They had a goal to create housing projects in Lansing. And now they've worked backwards and now they can explain why it's a good thing and why we have to. The other thing that really flagged me is this whole flippant nature of like, well, why wouldn't they want good management? I don't know, you tell me. Because we know that they don't care. They don't have to live in them, so that's why they don't care. He wants us to believe that they do care about the management. We know that not to be true. And then also that they may be the ones that manage them. LHC has mismanaged them for years. That's why we're in the situation that we're in right now and now there's talk of them managing them again? That's ridiculous.
Thank you. And we have now Michael Mercer.
Hey, Carol, last meeting here a couple of weeks ago, when you and Brekachinsky talking during the call, I heard you saying something about fifty-fifty for the sidewalk repair on trees that are in between the sidewalk and the street. It's not fifty-fifty. If it's caused by the tree there between the street and the sidewalk, that is a city tree, the city is responsible one hundred percent. And I can understand if it was the homeowner's tree, they're charged one hundred percent if it's in between the sidewalk and their home. And if it's caused by, you know, it's been years since they had a sidewalk put in, it's starting to crack and all that, yes, I can see that being fifty-fifty, but not if it's caused by those darn trees owned by the city of Lansing, because I got family that live in the city here and I don't want them having to pay that kind of money to fix these sidewalks of theirs when it's the city's tree. If that's what, it sounded like you said to Brekachinsky down here last meeting.
Thank you. That was our final speaker.
All right. No other business before the body. We are adjourned at nine fifty-three.